I make a motion to approve the agenda. To table the appointments for until a later date.
Okay.
And I request to re-approve the amended agenda.
Okay.
I need a second chair.
All in favor?
All right.
opposed.
Let's do another vote to approve the amended agenda. Now we approve the amended.
Okay.
Just to be...
I need...
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All in favor?
All right.
opposed. Okay, public forum, nobody signed up for that. Consent the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All in favor?
All right.
opposed. Okay, public forum, nobody signed up for that. Consent the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All in favor?
All right.
opposed. Okay, all business, Internet from the firehouse. We've discussed this and I need to know if you guys want to approve this or...
This is not what we're talking about. Who's paying for it?
Well, we talked about letting them pay for it. But once again, that's up to you guys, however you want to do it.
I was trying to have a point on your... They get it, I think this came out of the line.
Okay. So, let me do that.
I'm just waiting for the motion you made.
Okay.
About the different one, I got, you guys have a price list. I talked to Frankie, he said he thought that six megabits per second would be fast enough for what their needs are, and that's sixty-five dollars monthly recurring charge.
So that would be sixty-five dollars, either we pay for it or they pay for it. So...
I feel down, so I'll go.
So you're going to approve it with them paying for it?
Right.
Okay, I need a motion for us to approve it for them paying for it.
I make a motion to approve that they're paying for it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
opposed. Okay, now this is for the fax machine and the extra phone line.
Well, I make a motion that we don't, because like you said, I don't think it's necessary. You've been doing it that way for years now.
And we can always look at it later on. I mean, I just think right now it's an expense that we really don't need, because it's what, fifty dollars a month just for the phone line?
Fifty dollars a phone line.
I make a motion that we disapprove of that.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, new computer for the police department. You've got prices here on data counts and different...
Yeah, you should have Best Buy staples and Amazon prices. Try to get similar models. What was amazing was the Best Buy had the lowest price of four oh nine ninety-nine. That had eight megabytes of RAM, whereas these were more expensive and they only had four megabytes. They both had a terabyte hardware, so Best Buy will be...
So that's...
That's stealing. I make a motion that we approve the new computer for the police department, and we get it from Best Buy, whose lowest price.
Do we have a second?
We're sitting in the fighting room now.
Yeah.
We just had fifty dollars, you know, we're trying to save money. I don't expect Roger to start winning this year.
Okay. I agree with that. Second, no nothing else.
I disagree.
That's your right.
Because the fact is, is that he's having problems with his computer now, and he has state reports and stuff to do, and that unless he takes it home and runs it on his personal computer, which I don't think is proper either, doing city business on his own computer, that he ought to be allowed to have a new computer. He's had one that's been refurbished for a long time. We've never bought a brand new one for the police department. He's got one of the oldest computers out of all the departments.
Well, I guess this is something that we'll have to bring up at a later date and think about it and discuss it again. I mean, I don't know what else to say. Okay. Okay, canvassing of election results and acceptance by the board. I think you guys all have...
We should have the... We have the results. Lori Bayer with fourteen, opposed, Paul Franklin with fourteen, and then Agger with...
So I need a motion to accept the results.
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Okay, swearing in of the immediately elected officials. You're gonna do yours, Jesus.
We're gonna get a picture, aren't we? There.
Stand over there. There you go. Oh yeah, I forgot about the over there. Do we need to enlarge it real big? I think I'm right, get it off. You want to borrow my glasses?
And I'll read it and then go smoke. Okay, everybody raise your right hand.
I know.
I, say your name.
I, Lori Bayer.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the State of Missouri.
And the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws...
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state affecting cities...
Of this state affecting cities.
Of this class...
Of this class.
And the ordinances of the city.
And the ordinances of the city.
That I possess the qualifications...
That I possess the qualifications.
Required for such office...
Required for such office.
As specified in the laws...
As specified in the laws.
Of the State of Missouri.
Of the State of Missouri.
And I will demean myself...
And I will demean myself.
Faithfully in said office.
Faithfully in said office.
Alright.
I can actually read it.
You got it, alright, I need you all to sign the bottom there.
How you doing?
Alright, you can get a sign, three more places.
Did you get a sign?
I did. Yeah! You're going on the table, this is the table. Okay. We're at, yeah, we're right there. Good job, and right in that box right here. No, this will write on the... That's a common thing tonight.
I see.
And one more, in that box right there.
Shut up. Have a seat. Welcome to the board.
Yeah! Outstanding.
Okay. Lori, you have to drop the departmental reports. Do you have anything for emergency management?
I got lots of stuff. Alright, since the last meeting, I did successfully complete a class incident command systems number four hundred, which is the advanced one. Also did a search and rescue operation exercise up in near Kenzie. It was an excellent event, Eureka, search and rescue, had a one point five million dollar command unit there, there were horses, dogs, air evac, civil air patrol, sheriff's department. I mean, it was really well organized and a lot of people came out to play. Really good.
Did you learn a lot?
I learned I need to be in better shape. Plus I learned how to do the, I mean, and how to do the actual searches, you know, I mean, I could have just hung out in the emergency operations center, but I would have seen how it works, you know, in action. It was really, really, really good.
It was a lot of briers.
Yeah. I never got a Thorpe Bush patch, so, yeah. There is a CERT, Train the Trainer class. CERT is Community Emergency Response Team. That's where you can train citizens how to, like, basically when you first take care of yourselves, your family, and then you go out and you help your neighbors, they give you tools, how to do it, fire suppression, medical, it's the whole nine yards. It's a three-day class. This would allow me to be a certified instructor, so I could teach a lot of the class here for St. Mary's residents, and then we'd only have, probably have to do one day in St. Jen, where I'd have, like, experts doing the medical, fire suppression, and then the actual exercise. So if you want to pursue this, you know, I'd be willing to do that. There's no tuition, it's just my, um, to take that. So if you want me to do it, I make a motion because there is a malarious that's involved. It's just three days in.
Okay, what three days is it? Do you know that?
It's in May, it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, Friday. I already checked my calendar, I don't have anything else conflicting with it. I mean, I think there's a board meeting, but I'll be back in plenty of time for that. So it's up to you guys if you want me to pursue that.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Alright. There's also an ICS form class, that's one day. That's where you learn how to fill out the forms in the event of an emergency, to where you actually get paid. If you don't fill out the form, you don't get reimbursed. So I'd like permission to go to that, and I'm gonna tell you, even if you deny me, I'm going, I'll pay my own house, because I really want that one, but it's up to you, that was in July.
Is that, is that like, for the city to get reimbursed?
Oh yeah, yeah. Oh yeah, because we have to expend resources for, like, water, paying people to be standing there, or stuff like that. If we don't have the paperwork correct, you know, logging hours, you know, there's all these forms for different things, you know, with, the government's not gonna write you a check without the proper paperwork, and this is the, this is the paperwork.
They, they stress that.
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. You said it?
I said, I'm good.
Okay, water and serial report.
Okay, baptisms for this month are all good. Coring residents are staying pretty steady. We're beginning to have problems with the cooling pump not keeping prime, but we've changed the forward function valve and we should be all right. We fixed a small leak on a line on Eighth Street, and we had Missouri Rural Water Association circuit writer come and visit. I had called him earlier because I wanted to do a water audit to find out if he could help us find the leaks in the system, because we were paying such a high price on what we was pumping, so, but Mike and Frankie went around and did a survey themselves, like I asked them to, and they found a couple of leaks. One was over here on, what's that street? I can't see, Sycamore.
Sycamore.
Over here on Sycamore they found a leak, and they got that fixed, and one out there by Sabre Avenue, okay? But we were able to shut that off, so we haven't got a chance to get in and repair it yet, but, uh, so all he did was just a courtesy visit and we talked. The other thing was, is, uh, we've got the circle drive has been re-asphalted, and also where they tore up Sycamore has been asphalted, okay? And from what I understand, from, they'll be up in the next two weeks to do the driveway, fix, re-foil the driveway up there. We worked on the sewer side, we worked on several grinders, and we cleared it. For some reason on Cemetery Road every now and then it will get a clog in that lines over between Ray's Way and Fourth Street, okay? So what we've had to do is to use that relief valve on Fifth Street, and use the grinders to force it through, and then shut to operate the relief valve to clear it. So we got them off, I mean, we cleared it, and it works fine for a while, and then once in a while it will plug back up again. Everybody's grinder lights will be going off on Cemetery Road. Ray has a problem with his, and I think it's, we haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but the bottom seal on it, okay, where the pump seals with the, with the thing is not sealing right, and I think the openings are dead or something, got a cut in the openings or something, because he's getting all the feedback from the sewer line coming up into his head, causing his pump to work longer than it should, okay? So we're gonna, we're gonna look at that. Let's see, uh, that's pretty much it for the, oh, I did want to let everybody know, the board know that we sent our baptisms off this month, we sent it off like we should, and I got a call from DNR saying that it never got there in time, that for some reason the messenger didn't get it down there to have it tested in time, so we had to send in a, you know, a replacement sample. Rather than send it, we took it down to Jackson, down to Jackson, and had it tested there, so that we wouldn't go and take another chance of having the messenger not get there in time with the sample. If this keeps happening, then we're gonna have to do something different, okay? But that was the first time it's happened, you know, since I've been doing this, that the sample's never reached the lab in time to be tested, so we'll give it a chance next month, and if it happens again, then we're gonna have to figure out something else to go to a different lab or whatever to, to, to do our testing. That's it on the morning sword, and I thank you guys.
Okay, the park and cemetery?
Okay, the, in the park, the, as you all know, they had an egg hunt for Easter down there, the youth, it all went out, went real well, I didn't hear no complaints, and I think they got a department, somebody replying back, they did not. Okay, anyway, it was all well. In the cemetery, they mowed around the gray sites, but they didn't have a chance to get the new part yet, so it kind of looks bad up there, and the park needs to be removed, but other than that, everything's fine.
Okay. Straight Department?
Yeah, the only thing I've got, right now we're trying to get through, we repaired this street over here, this corner by your place, pretty lit, we've got someone, somebody come down and give us a bit of, there's a tile broken, there's some, it's gonna have to do this, it's too old, already gave it in, and if we don't get it out, we're gonna have to do the street. That's all I've got, we've got some cool work on.
Okay. Fire Department? Let me just clean what I've, so, everything went.
Let me do a report first. Okay. I went to the chiefs meeting, and they've been talking for some time about trying to get the entire county, all of us on board with everybody having the same equipment as far as SCBA's. Right now, pretty much, it's us, we have NSA's, Ozora has ISIs, there's, St. Jen has Scotts, I think, if I remember right, I think Wining Gardens got either Scott or MSA, and then Kenzie's got Gregors, I think it is. Anyway, they were talking about wanting to get everybody to have the same equipment, so if we were called out by call, everybody knows what each other's got, you can just grab a pack and go, and everybody, we don't have to worry about interoperability on the scene, so to speak. So they had put together, and we're gonna try to get a grant to get everybody to have the same SCBA's, and that, they have a fifteen-year warranty, the service, we actually would take them right up to Arnold, if we need service on them, we can take them up there, get them fixed, bring them back, it ain't like we gotta run a ten-month due to get the thing fixed. And also, plus, they were talking about trying to get set up with fill stations, because like, right now, we have to actually go up to St. Jen, or go to Ozora to get our tanks filled, so we have our breathing air. So that, if we could actually put in for a grant and get a breathing air compressor, we could have in-house, we could take and fill our tanks, we can fill our search tanks that we have in our truck, too, and be able to be a little more sufficient, trying to keep everything, being able to have everything in the department that we need to make the department run, rather than having to run all the time, trying to make everything come together, so to speak. And they were talking like it was in between a five, ten percent grant, and they said to take it to the board and see what they thought about it, and also they're gonna have, on the eleventh, at seven PM next month, a, more or less gonna explain how they work and whatnot. That's one of the brochures they had, and they showed us. Several of the guys that work actually on the actual city departments up in St. Louis, they said they love them, they, they said they're a lot, they're easy to work with, and just pretty much, that it's, it's unlike any other one they've used. Forty-five hundred, I think it's forty-five hundred PSI they said it would be, so roughly about forty-five minutes.
Now, is this something you're trying to get with the grant?
Yes, their, their, their plan is the entire county coming together with this grant, and submitting it as a, more or less like a county-wide grant, not just St. Mary Fire Department, not just Wining Gardens Fire Department, all of us going together to try to get the same equipment and be able to, it, they, they believe by doing that it'd be a lot easier than each individual department trying to get it, is, is the purpose behind it. Also, we, well, we have a, I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, they have like what they call a RIT pack, or a RIT connection, and basically, it's like if you've got somebody that's actually trapped in a house, and they're out of air, you can go in there and you can hook a plug to them and actually allow them to have breathing air, and that way, that's what more or less spurred all this together, that, you know, we, we showed up to a, more or less, what was it, a live burn, and they thought, you know what, we ought to see if we can take and we can work together and actually be able to hook packs together in case we had to go, like, say, St. Jen's in there with their Scotts on, and we going there with our MSAs, and we can't connect, we can't, our connectors will not work, we can't even adapt and try to make them work. And so, what more or less brought all of this around, which our packs are getting some, pardon, our packs are getting some age on them, we've got two of them that are actually broken right now, they've got pieces that are broken on the face piece, the pass device doesn't work, and also, they've been still, but talking about that they're gonna eventually make it to where we have to have the newer style air packs according to the SCBA standards, and this might actually get a dump on that if we can actually get a grant and have the packs and keep them playing too, so to speak.
He would do the grant, or I would just work?
The, they're talking about, they're gonna have a grant writer do that, do a grant, that's what this is, they're, they're just wanting to, they want, they want us to go out there, talk to the board, and see if you're on board with this, I mean, that's, that's what they wanted to know, is more or less, who all's on board with this and who isn't, so to speak.
Well, actually, to me, it sounds no good if it, if it work out.
Fifteen years, I mean, honestly, I, I've never heard of them actually offering that.
Chris, can you get us some communication in the county to say they are going to grant or whatever?
I can, I can take a talk to them and see what, like I said, right now, they're just trying to see who all is interested, if, who's on board with it and who isn't, so they know kind of what we're looking at as far as price-wise, that we figured probably about, I'm gonna say around fourteen SCBA's, in which each SCBA we purchased would actually come with a spare bottle, so if we had fourteen, we'd actually have twenty-eight bottles, so to speak, and then our breathing air compressor.
Would we have to make motions?
No, I mean, I mean, we're, I mean, I'm sure that everybody sitting on the board is in agreement that that's a good idea, okay? The only thing that I want to know is if we're in agreement, Ozori in agreement, uh, whatever, you understand what I'm saying, these other departments? We want, we want some communication from the county.
Well, everybody, as far as the chiefs, they're all for it, because they know, they know the need is there, that we need to be able to show up on the scene and, hey, we all can work together, our equipment will work with our equipment.
Right, I totally understand that, Chris, you know, you convinced me, or whatever, but what I'm saying is, is...
I don't want to do anything until you make sure everybody else is on board.
Right, because it don't matter if we say yes or no, it doesn't matter, because if everybody else don't agree with it, or, or whatever, it ain't gonna happen, do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, man, I...
So, that's what I want, is communication from the county, saying, okay, well, we got this one, we got that one, that one, and then we'll be, them will make a resolution or whatever we have to do.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it to your guys.
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, I know.
All right, we had one call out for NBA, we lost one firefighter. We had five people, most of you started out with eight people going to first responder course, and ended up with five finishing, we all passed, all five of us passed. Had trucks pumped tested on forty-one and forty-two, they both passed the flow test, and forty-one passed the mechanical, but forty-two had a problem with the mechanicals. We had a problem with our remote idler, the pressure leak valve, so I definitely had to manually press the fuel to get it up to the standards, so we had to pass the flow tester, not the mechanicals. We did hose testing, two, only two of our hoses were bad, and we had to take out service. We had a good turnout for the barbecue with the rain, so we made six hundred and ninety dollars on that, and then we had a good turnout on fifty-fifty, which was five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Like to give special thanks to Dennis for donating...
Um, we had five people, actually we started out with eight people going to, um, first fund your course and ended up with five finishing. Uh, we all passed, all five of us passed. Um, had trucks pumped tested, uh, on forty-one and forty-two, they both passed the flow test and, uh, forty-one passed the mechanicals, but forty-two had a problem with the mechanicals. Uh, we had a problem with our remote, uh, uh, idler, uh, the pressure leaked out. So I definitely had to manually press the fuel to get it up to the standards, so it passed the flow tester, not the mechanicals. Um, we did hose testing, uh, two, only two of our hoses were bad and we had to take out service. Um, we had a good turnout at the barbecue with the rain, so we made six hundred and ninety dollars on that. And then, uh, we had a good turnout on fifty-fifty, which was five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Uh, I'd like to give a special thanks to Dennis for donating back the fifty-fifty to us, which kept it at the same price. Um, I'd like to give a thanks to the county sheriff's department for bringing their car down, ambulance district for bringing their ambulance truck down. Uh, we would've had air back, but the weather was bad, so we didn't need to have them, but I do appreciate everybody for coming out to the barbecue. And that's pretty well all I have.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
You hear from ISO, I know they're gonna do St. Jen.
Yes. I'm thinking it's the seventh of July. So. No, I take it back. I'm thinking that was, right, that was the seventh, seventh of July, I think's what it said. I've got, I've got an email from him, matter of fact, that actually says, I'm pretty sure if I remember right, he said it was the seventh. I thought I put it actually in what calendar, but.
I got somebody else almost there too. I had a complaint about Mike not.
Yes, we, um, we took care of that for his excessive speed.
Yes.
I gave him.
July seventh.
A sixty day suspension, which I know on our ordinance it says ninety days, but I figured sixty days would be good enough for that. And if he does it again, then I give him the ninety, and then after that, I turn eighty, so. Anyway, we, we had, we curtainted a discussion, we understand the procedures there, which we did have, you know, I know blood's flowing whenever we have a call out, you know, so, and stuff, and which we did take care of that situation. I knew it was an agent on the road that day, so.
Why, yeah, but we don't.
Yeah, well, that's getting around, so, I mean, if it don't, uh, taken care of with this, then we'll have to go to other managers.
Cause he live in a terrible, it's kind of horrible, isn't it?
Well, he's on the twelve mile border line of our jurisdiction, 'cause we got jurisdiction all the way to Lethem.
Yeah, but if he, it's way down here and he flies by to get last time, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, I understand that. I'm gonna talk with him. I told him, I said, I said, I understand if you live where you do, I said, I said, drive with precaution. I mean, it's basically like any fire pole, you don't, uh, drive like you got sense, so to speak, I mean.
Alright, good.
In my, in my opinion, with that to you, and, I mean, you know, we have our ins and outs and stuff, but the thing about it is, I look at it this way, he does show up to fire poles. So that's the reason why I do like him being on here, 'cause we don't have nobody in this town that actually wants to join the fire department and, and actually be part of the fire department, so. I mean, we only got a certain chosen few and that's, you know, that's actually why I wanna be there. And then other people work out of town, so, you know.
Yeah, but not here, it ain't.
Well, we're not here to dictate.
Well, we, and, and we don't want any complaints, we don't need any, we'll say.
No, no, no.
We understand that, we understand that.
We sure don't. If it came right good, don't worry nothing.
Yeah, I think we're done, long board meeting.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, police department?
Okay.
So we don't have no comments tonight.
Okay. Animal control?
Oh, it's fine. I'm, yeah, I'm, yeah, I control it all, so. Only thing is, mine walking around the block every evening.
He would.
He's on at least.
Citizens' participation, does anybody have anything to say?
Iceland was supposed to be here, but he didn't show up.
Okay, I'd say somebody make the motion to close the meeting.
Close, close the meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.